All right, welcome everyone. I would like to call to order the August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. My name is Shayla Adam Stafford, and I am the Chair of this committee and the District Four Representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. Thank you to everyone for being here tonight. We will not have introductions of committee members, starting with board members, administration staff, board office staff, and all other guests. So I'll start with our Chair who's joining us this evening.
Good evening, my name is Judy Mackens Murray, I'm Chair of the School Board and a voting member of the Budget Committee. I've been on policy and governance so long that I almost forgot. But this year, I'm having a new experience with the Budget Committee, and I appreciate that. And I'm excited about this year and the enthusiasm that board members have shown by sacrificing a lot of their summer getting prepared for this school year. So thank you, thank you Chair Shayla Adam Stafford.
All right, Vice Chair, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Whoops, I'm on mute, hey, sorry, sure thing, everyone, hey. Welcome back, I'm excited to be here, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I'm excited for the work that we plan to do this year in ABFA. Welcome to our new members, actually, I think everyone on the committee in terms of board members is new this year, so welcome, welcome, welcome. Excited to continue the work from last year, and thank you again for the time.
Okay, other board members feel free to come off mute and introduce yourselves.
Hello, everyone, I'm Jocelyn Routh, one of the newest board members here. I'm happy to be serving on this committee, and I am the at-large member appointed by the county council, thank you so much.
Hello, everyone, my name is Rain Rivera Forbes, I am the student member of the board. I'm extremely excited to be here, especially with the student member of the board now having voting rights on the budget. I believe this is an amazing opportunity for us as students, and to be the first student member of the board to have this just experience is amazing for me. And I'm very excited for this upcoming school year on the ABFA committee, so thank you so much.
All right, if staff would like to introduce themselves, feel free to do that now, and then other members of the administration.
Thank you, good afternoon, my name is Shirazka Coleman, Chief Operating Officer, good to see everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone, welcome back, I am Michelle Winston, I am the Director of Internal Audit.
Good afternoon, I'm Lisa Howe, Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon, Shayla Taylor, Supervisor of Capital Programs.
I'm Matt Locke, Director of Capital Programs.
Jason Washington, Director of Office of Alternative Infrastructure Planning and Development.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Jessica Guerrero, I'm an Administrative Secretary for the Board Office.
Thank you again, everyone, for being here this evening, Ms. Guerrero, please call the role.
Yes ma'am, Mrs. Shayla Adam Stafford.
Here.
Dr. Kenneth Harris.
Here.
Mrs. Judy Mackens Murray.
Yeah.
Mrs. Jocelyn Routh.
Here.
Mrs. Rain Rivera Forbes.
Here.
All right, we have four.
Thank you, may I have a motion to adopt the August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three meeting agenda?
I moved to adopt the agenda for the August twenty-third agenda.
Second.
You're on mute.
You muted, sure.
Okay, I owe everybody a dollar, sorry about that, I will not do that again. It has been moved and seconded to adopt the August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three meeting agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the last meeting minutes of the previous year.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded to approve the June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I. All right, opposed? All right, the motion passes, the minutes are approved. Okay, we have zero speakers registered for public comment today. So we are going to move forward into discussion on item three point one, which will be a CIP moment, Presentation and Discussion of Recommendations Regarding the Capital Improvement Program and Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Charles Coleman, our Chief Operating Officer, and his team to proceed with tonight's presentations, thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much Board Committee Chair Adam Stafford and board members. We are grateful for the opportunity during the CIP moment to provide an update on the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP. The CIP is a multi-year spending plan that must be submitted to the Board of Education for approval by September of each school year. In addition, a public hearing must occur prior to the Board of Education approval of the CIP. So August is an opportune time to reintroduce the proposed FY twenty-five capital budget request. In addition, Associate Superintendent for Supporting Services, Mr. Washington, will also provide an update on both Phase One and Phase Two of our Blueprint Schools. So at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Capital Programs Director, Mr. Matlock, and Supervisor, Mrs. Taylor, to provide details on the CIP, and then Mr. Washington for the Blueprint Schools updates.
So, Ms. Guerrero, if you could bring up our presentation. Thank you very much. So, if you can advance the slide to the next one. Actually, could you advance the next two slides? There we go, all right, so we're gonna try and give you just a quick overview in three phases. What we did do, what was funded for last year, which is really the FY twenty-four capital budget, and then what's proposed for the FY twenty-five capital budget. Now, you'll see notes on here that say that what we did in FY twenty-four, really, we're talking about what we did in FY twenty-three. So well, that's really kind of what we're going over, so if you could advance the slide, please. So, we had a lot of work, there's a lot of schools that we're working on, so I'm gonna try and be quick about it, we're gonna try and give you the numbers, next slide, please. So we did one hundred and sixteen projects, were finished and are occupied slash in use, or substantial completion. Fifty-three of those were a hundred percent closed and are off the books right now, so they're final completion. We have three projects received design award and approval from the state, and we had over a hundred and forty capital projects in construction this summer. Next slide, please. Over thirty-four awards. This year, we spent almost a hundred and sixty million dollars in, we might be over the hundred and sixty million dollar mark this year, which is a really good thing. We have over eighty change orders that were processed and approved this year. Of those, four of those were change orders were due to agency mandates, DPI, WSSC, DOE. Thirty-six percent of those COs were due to unseen or poor conditions in existing buildings. Three point six percent of those were average change order rates, which is basically under the four percent industry average, a little higher than last year, but still under the industry average. And six percent of the process change orders, roughly about eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, were credit backs to PGCPs, so there were reductions in project costs. Next slide. So of that one hundred and sixteen projects, you can see we had an array of types of projects. Seventeen systemic HVACs, seventeen code and life safety upgrades, eleven playground placements, nine ADA upgrades, asbestos abatement parking lots, you can see there, next slide. We also, you know, had a lot of physical activity locations, like tennis courts, dance floors, there was some bird fuel tanks that were changed, some park conversions, roof replacements, bleacher upgrades, tracks, things like that, next slide. The summer projects were mostly focused on systemics, so you have the HVAC replacements, we had asbestos abaintments, which we tried to get done in the summertime, we had thirteen kitchen upgrades, eight school restroom upgrades, seven playground placements, and programs like that, next slide, please. These are some other types of products we did this summer. As you see, the ten classroom additions are the methodology we now are using for additions to buildings. It used to be there would be the one little classroom trailers that you would see stacked out. Now what we're doing is big classrooms, the reason why we're doing that is because, one, they can be secured better, we can put actual locks on the doors. Two, they have bathrooms inside, so students don't have to go in and out of the building to use the restroom. And also because of the foundation requirements, and the water and sprinkler requirements and fire alarm requirements, it's easier to build one big building, one big modular building, rather than multiple trailers. So it's safer, secure, and more convenient for the students and the teachers, next slide, please. So, we have a number of major projects that are in construction right now. Sutland High School, which is the most prominent, William Work Middle School Replacement, New Glen Ridge Area Middle School, which is a new school, and James Madison Middle School System Modernizations. Those are our big projects going on, if any time you would like to come out and see them, please let me know, because I'm very proud of the work that's being done on those sites, and they're gonna be really, really nice schools, next slide, please. So, other projects that we had going through the ACF, five of which are gonna open this fall, next week, New Adelphi Area Middle School, which is so to so to my your middle school, Walker Mill Middle School, Kenmore Middle School, Drew Freeman, and Highfield Middle School, Colin Powell, for a lot of reasons, is not going to open until November, but we will be opening it right around, right after Thanksgiving break, next slide, please. And then we have major projects in design right now, we have the New Northern Area High School, High Point High School, William Schmidt Outdoor Education Center, Calvert Elementary School, which is stage renovations, Longfields Elementary School, which is the stage renovation, Merwin Heights School, which is the stage renovations, next slide. One of the schools that's not mentioned there is Cool Springs, which is gonna be an expansion of that school so that we accommodate the population from Adelphi Elementary School. We are actively working on the feasibility study for that, which we're probably presenting at the September Board Meeting. Also, we have, this is sort of a pie chart by the numbers of how the projects are dispersed, based through the budget up to this point. And you can see the large share of projects is HVAC systemic projects, they're our biggest share of projects, next slide, please. So what was funded in FY twenty-four, so this year, we just started the FY twenty-four budget, and we'll give you a feel for what was funded last year for this upcoming year, next slide, please, or this current year. As the process, as we've talked about before, is that right around this time, we do the capital improvement budget plan is submitted in August, September, which is then approved, and it has to go on over to the state and the county government in October. In October, then they work on the budgets, and we start to get preliminary numbers in April and May. You get ninety-five percent from the state by June, and final budget from the county by June, and then we implement that in that following year, next slide. So, last year, we requested sixty-three million dollars in state funding, we got approved for sixty-two million dollars. We requested a hundred and fifty-one million dollars in county funding, we got ninety-eight million dollars. So we got a total of a hundred and sixty-one million dollars in approved funding for FY twenty-two. Keep moving, please, next slide. So, of those, ninety-two point three million were from state and county approved projects, which is William Schmidt, Sutland High School, Cool Springs Elementary, Adelphi Modernization, that's that expansion I was discussing, New Northern Area and High Point, and then approved for state and county funding, like small systemics. We had the Woodridge Elementary School HVAC replacement, which is in design, and some ongoing HVAC projects, where we got an additional funding from the state, next slide, please. Over sixty-one million in approved funds for the various projects that you see on this list, I'm not gonna go through each one of them, but you can see that it's dispersed in a wide range of projects, next slide. And then, so what are our justice, or what we're asking for in FY twenty-five? So the final FY twenty-five budget should look something like this, next slide, please. We are requesting or recommending that we receive two hundred and eighteen point seven million dollars for FY twenty-five, of which the total county funding request would be a hundred and forty-nine million, and the state request would be nineteen point sixty-nine point four million. And then we have HSFF grant request of eighteen point three, which I believe we've gotten most of that request. The HSFF is a number of like systemic projects that you can apply for, through a special grant project with the state. Normally, we request roofs and A straight seat projects and some window projects. Typically, they've given us roofs, and I believe all the roof projects we requested for this year have been approved. Major projects proposed by FY twenty-five CIP, we got the six new schools or modernizations for existing schools, six phase renovations, and then countywide funding for other compliance issues, and then there's money, roughly twenty-four point five for the ACF slash P three funding, next slide, please. You got another eighteen million for roof replacements, a lot of that money is again coming through HSFF grant funding. You've got nine point nine million for systemic repairs for existing schools, seven point five in major repairs at existing schools, three point five in compliance mandates, three point five million in stadium upgrades, three million in central garage and transportation upgrades, two million in mechanical HVAC upgrades at existing schools, and then one point five in security upgrade to the existing schools, next slide, please. So this is sort of how it breaks down for our major modernizations, as you can see, William Schmidt has gotten its total state funded request, twelve million dollars is coming from the county. Sutland is, right now, that number is probably gonna be higher than what it is now. We've also requested an additional sixty-eight million dollars from the state for Sutland because of the cost of materials and things like that, that budget has just blown up, and so we're dealing with that right now. Cool Springs, we have a total request of a hundred and four, and that will include an expansion of our of a therapy pool, and keeping some of our central office operations on that campus. So it's a very sizable project. We have New Northern Area High School, which we've talked about before, High Point High School Replacement, which is upcoming, and then the New International School, which really has been on the books for a while, but hasn't moved very far because of other considerations and issues related to its design, next slide, please. We've got here, you'll see that these are stage county phase renovations. What you'll notice is that this year, even though we've asked for like five hundred thousand dollars, there's not a lot of expenditures in this year. We, for reasons related to the overall budget, we are pushing these projects out a little ways in order to make room for other expenditures, so we've pushed them out a little bit, about a year, two years in some cases, next slide, please. These are helping schools projects, as you can see, they're mostly roof and window replacements, and I believe we got the bulk of the funding for that from the state, and you'll see that there's some matching funds from the county, roughly, probably about five million dollars in matching funds for the county, next slide, please. We have the alternative construction finance or P three projects that Mr. Washington's gonna talk about after we move on, but as you can see, seventeen million dollars of our capital budget is part of the AP payment, and that's made on an annual basis, so this funds just go into an escrow account, and then that funds are paid out on a monthly basis, sort of like a mortgage payment. The other four million dollars is for our procurement of the second phase, which is, we're moving quite well on, but there's a lot of work to be done. There's basically almost a nine-month E and A period where we'll be negotiating the terms and design issues related to the new buildings. And so that's the cover of the cost of that, and having our advisors on board, lawyers, and that's for stuff to make all that happen, next slide, please. So these are other expenditures, downstream county-only funding expenditures, like ADA upgrades, asbestos, code, lead remediation, that totals about three point eight million dollars, next slide. We have roughly thirty-two million dollars in state funding and one million dollars, I mean thirty million in county funding, and one million dollars in other funding that we received for aging schools related to mostly countywide funded projects, kitchen food service, parking lot driveways, planning and design, playgrounds, security upgrades, stadium upgrades, that's where all that breaks down into, and that's almost all exclusively county funded, next slide. So, this is the total number of our requests. One thing you should note is that we try to segregate as much of the county funding away from state funding as possible, because we want to have as much flexibility as we can. We try to reserve the state funding for large projects, and or grant projects. So, we're requesting right now eighty-seven point seven million in state funding, sixty-eight million dollars that I would talk about is in there, and a hundred and forty-nine million dollars in county funding, for a total of two hundred and thirty-six point seven million dollars in the FY twenty-five budget. Next slide. So this is the schedule, we have the first reader on August twenty-fourth, we have the public hearing on September fifth, we have second reader on the twenty-first of September, October fourth, we would submit this to both the IC and the county. The IC will get the comprehensive maintenance plan about two weeks later. The governor announces, or what the general capital budget that they're gonna make available for schools. IC then in December goes to seventy-five percent, so in December, we know seventy-five percent of the funding that they're gonna provide, and they're gonna tell you how it's allocated amongst the jurisdictions. And then in January, the county government has this public hearing on the budget. The IC approves the ninety percent of the capital budget by February. And then in March, we have public, there's another county public hearing on the budget. April, their state legislature adopts the final budget, which then allows the IC to approve the projects in the FY twenty-five CIP. The county approves the final budget, and IC releases its adopted FY twenty-five CIP in June, next slide, please. So at this point, if you have questions, open for questions, Shayla and I are both open for questions.
All right, thank you so much for that presentation, and I'd like to open it up to see if any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Matlock and his team. Okay, I see Vice Chair Harris, your hand is up, you can go ahead and go now, thanks.
Thanks, can you re-display the slide for me? I always like to pull directly from the information there on this thing. So, hey, Mr. Matlock, how you doing, thanks for the presentation. Appreciate the wealth of knowledge that was shared there. The first question I have is in regards to any delays that we might see with the opening of six of our new schools, and this could be from Mr. Washington as well. I know, for example, if, you know, Drew Freeman had been delayed, then that would have impacted the swing space that we're using, being, you know, force of military academy, which would impact James Madison. Are there impacts such as that for Colin Powell, I'm not sure about the swing space situation or anything like that, can you talk to me about that?
We're only moving two schools in, and that's gonna be Potomac Landing and Isaac Gordon, those are the only two schools that are moving in, and their buildings are okay for now, and so there was no swing related to Colin Powell.
Got it. Okay, and you said, you said tentative date is right after Thanksgiving?
Yes, it'll be ready.
Okay, got it. Just a question for me, in terms of the Phase Two buildings that include Sutland High School, do you have a Gantt chart you're able to share with me? Just project milestone and things like that for that program, I know it's in a phased approach.
Yeah, so, I don't, I probably have something I could share as far as Sutland is concerned, but I, let me, I'd have to, you have to let me share screen, hold on, I'm looking fine here.
Well, that's fine, you don't have to share it now, that's more so a follow-up action item, so.
Sure, I can get that to you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Can you go to slide fourteen for me, please? And I'm, I'm gonna try to be quick, I've got, I think, one more after this. So as she goes to slide fourteen, so slide fourteen is your pie chart, that basically breaks down by the numbers of the example of products that we're doing. Some questions I have here are around, do we have more drilled down versions of this chart for just like conversation that being had that could potentially be shared with board members, some things to consider with HVACs, things such as, you know, are we thinking through sustainable approaches? How in-depth are these HVAC units being switched out, or not even switched out, but upgraded in general? Are we doing things like targeting VOCs and pathogens or particulates that can impact students' health? Are we being as efficient as possible with choosing the system, are we looking at systems that do, you know, air recirculation and things of that nature? And then are we taking advantage of things like the qualified improvement property? I don't know if it's a grant or anything like that, or even if it is in two thousand and twenty-three, but are we taking advantage kind of those things as we think through these upgrades? Because that is a major chunk of the pie chart, so I just kind of want to know, are we putting in systems that are gonna have some sustainable aspect to them, since we're moving in that direction anyway?
So, we are taking into consideration the CCAP when we're looking at all these things. What you're gonna find is that some of the earlier, some of these systems, we're just trying to keep together, right? And they're older systems, and so we're doing maintenance, basically replacing kind work at some of those schools. Some of the other schools where we were able to swap out the systems, we're putting in much more modernized systems to do all the things that you're talking about, they're coming closer in line, CCAP, coming closer in line with particulate and things like that. And on all of our new systems, all of our new schools, they are getting all that. But it's difficult to upgrade adequately, because as you know, the HVAC systems aren't just standalone. So where we can replace everything, we're replacing the ductwork, replacing the piping, placing the windows, doing a new sort of skin for those buildings, so that we can put in better systems in them. And so that's been a process that we've been doing the last, let's say, five years. And so we're trying to put the newer systems in. But as far as the resiliency aspects of them, some of those systems just won't be there yet because of the buildings that they're going into are not sufficient to become as resilient as we'd like. But we are trying to make sure that they're completely updated, and that we're replacing whole systems where we can.
Understood, and thank you for that, and I know that, you know, I guess the point I was going, is it as simple as, you know, integrating like MIR filters or HEPA filters into what we have in terms of just like air purification and things of that nature?
We did that as part of the COVID thing, so there were filter systems that were updated. That's really not part of the HVAC system from that standpoint, but there has been additional filtering that's been added, and particulate control, yes.
And that's my question, I didn't, I just wanted to ensure that system upgrade didn't just include the filter aspects of them. Um, and then I have one last question that applies to the HVAC system, but I'm forgetting it. Um. Oh, I'll circle back around if I think about it. But thank you for, thank you for your time there. And then um slide thirty. Um, this is for our chair. I know we had some conversations around trying to um in increase uh community awareness around what we're doing. I think slide thirty would be a good visual if we can make that make that happen. Okay, thanks for your time.
All right. Uh, thank you so much. Chair McKins Murray.
Thank you, uh Chair Adam Stafford. Uh, two questions really for me to learn. So if you guys need me to take it offline and talk to someone on the side, that's fine. Uh, what is local planning approval? And I'm looking at the High Point High School, and I know that's been a bone of contention for a long time. So I just need to understand what local planning approval is.
So that's when the IC gives grants us the permission to move forward with the project um from their standpoint, like uh basically they're they're approving our 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 ability to move forward with the project so that they can consider it for funding. We can, we can design all we want, but until we start exchanging data with the DJF, DGS and stuff like that, it's really not a project as far as they're concerned. It's just a request.
Okay, so this could go on for years?
Um, yeah, I mean, you could get local planning approval for a project um and you could have it all the way up until you request the funding. Um, and 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 it might take depending on how long, because there's always a match fund thing, some some jurisdictions, including us, sometimes take long times on a project based upon that that the the design issues and making sure we have additional funding.
Okay, at some point then I need to drill down on that because I know the High Point High School, I think when I was on the board in two thousand and two, I think that was an issue. So it's still an issue, and that's a long time. So um my.
Things have changed too, because we're the the design and size of that school and the academic deliver the academic programs that are gonna be delivered there have changed significantly since then due to some of the other plans of the the other design and uh vision issues related to the school.
I appreciate that. I just need some insight into the central garage transportation upgrades. Are those bus lots or that what where is?
So currently, the project that is uh in front of us is the Mulliken Bus Lot. Okay, we're right now, we originally thought we were gonna have some money to electrify it, but we may not. So we're we're looking at some different ways to to electrify it so that we can have electric buses there. But we are, it's gonna be a whole new depot there. Uh, I believe a new cleaning station for the buses and a new garage for repairs and things like that. Right now, we will be housing twenty electric buses there, and we rate arrange for temporary charging stations or mobile charging stations that will be used to charge those buses. Eventually, our goal is to turn that into a fully electrified bus system with a microgrid that can then be used for electric buses up to about um ninety electric buses there.
Thank you so much, Ken, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Uh, thank you so much for this presentation. I had a few questions uh myself and just a few comments. So I appreciate you giving us some perspective on the change orders. I know that's often a question that board members have and giving us some understanding of the industry average for change orders. I was wondering if you could possibly provide board members with like a longitudinal table that says like over the last, you know, five years, here's where we have fallen in terms of change orders. And I know you mentioned this year is just a tad higher than last year, but that just helps us to understand, you know, sort of uh on an aggregate where this is landing. I think that would be helpful for.
Yeah, we we develop a change order report every month and uh by my office, and we can have that um we can do you a a um sort of a presentation that lays it out longitudinal, how we go year to year, because we do it, we have a report every month.
I think that would be really helpful for board members and then help and then we can say, okay, so what are some of the root causes here and what are some things that we can do to mitigate? Um. I have had a chance to come out to the new Chemore with Mr. Washington, and it is fantastic. I just want to say uh your team and just everyone involved with the building of our P three schools, you all have done just a really fantastic job. But I want to go back to school and teach now, you know, I wish I could teach in in a school like Chemore. It's it's really beautiful and and students are lucky to enter into those new buildings. Um. I have a very specific question about the new Glen Ridge area school, so I'll add ask that when I ask about the P three questions. Um.
What do Glen Ridge have P three?
I'm sorry, Glen, uh when I ask about Glen, so then I I'll ask you now. Um, so I know that I you may have heard me just sort of really pushing for the school-based health clinics and the use of the community spaces. Um, just because, you know, incorporating that into the school design, you know, really will help us on so many other levels, you know, across the school system, reducing truancy, you know, you know, raising our rates of students that are properly vaccinated. And so I just wanted to get an update if that was being considered at the the Glen Ridge School.
So all of our new middle schools have a component of a uh have a location in the building that can be used for that has off um its own access and can be utilized
That's important.
For, yeah, for a clinic. And but it's up to the um, we try to negotiate with um the county uh on what they can get in there. Usually they're the ones to provide providers. We don't do that. But we do, we're now building them in all of our middle schools. So if we build a little school, it has a location for that.
Okay, well, I I'm just really grateful and thank you, uh Mr. Washington, for really listening. I think all of you for really listening to our advocacy there around that. That's going to be really fantastic. Uh, I wanted to um just a another sort of just um general question about sort of the tracking of the modernization of the different schools. You know, as a board member, I'm super grateful to see uh the modernization efforts that are happening. Um, you know, everything from parking lots to HVAC systems, these are the things that we're emailing about all of the time. And and I'm happy to see the way that you all are moving through that process. I think it would be helpful to ease some of the community angst about like, when is my school being renovated? When is this happening here? Because you have all the information, right? If there, and I don't know if this is something that already exists on your end, but some sort of community tracker that basically has um maybe, you know, kind of like the groupings that you have on slide twenty four, but just like with with an added like a due date on there. So it's like, oh, I know if I move to this area, this school will be built by this date. Or I know if I move to this neighborhood, this school is on track to be renovated by this date. And I know that in between time, we're doing all of this modernization work. But even if there was some sort of like, kind of like dropdown opportunity where you could like, and now I'm starting to think of like, how it would look for the user, but you know what I mean? It's just kind of like what we our job is to really, you know, pull people into our awesome school system. And we're and I know my colleagues can speak as well, you know, the biggest draw for people when they're moving to a place is what are the schools like? And what we can say is, hey, you're moving to this neighborhood, let me just show you, oh, they're on track for blank. You know, and just giving folks some of that understanding of the work that's happening behind the scenes. So I know that was long, but I just love to hear your thoughts and other folks' thoughts on something like that.
I think we would love to be able to provide, at least for the one thing, uh um Mr. Washington and his team with 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 the ACF have been very good, being able to provide a date of certain when a building is going to be built. Part of our uh and for us, we have a little bit of that ability to do, but the problem that we have is it all depends on design, funding and and deep eye. Unfortunately, not necessarily in that order. Um, and so uh we, you know, one of the issues that we have in in our jurisdiction is getting a project permitted to go forward sometimes can throw your your like suit line should have been started a year ago. I mean, a lot of the work on it should have been started a year ago. We started some work and then we had to stop and um and and all that's all about permitting and uh and and the soils and a lot of the the regulatory issues around construction in Prince George County specifically. Um, and so it's 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 made it difficult for us to project. We can, we do have an order uh that we can make available that is part of our schedule that we have for the cycle one and cycle twos. One thing we are going to be doing though is we're going to be evaluating cycle two and cycle three and maybe making some adjustments based on current condition. Because some buildings have deteriorated more than others. We're in a process of doing that now. As you know, we did the structural analysis that we did recently that ended up putting uh two schools on the ACF list that weren't originally on it uh because of structural conditions. So we're constantly evaluating and we'll, and I think we can do something that generally gives that, but again, we're trying to make sure that we're staying as accurate as we can based upon current condition of the buildings and also availability of funds as well.
Yeah, and and you know, that actually brings me to my next question, which was about deep eye, you know. Uh, just quite plainly, how can we advocate to deep eye to help you do your job, like to build the schools and you know, quickly and modernize them and do what needs to be done so our students can be in the best building? I I know that we have a lot of requirements here in our county and permitting is a a major challenge. I mean, I've gone to schools where they've had modular units outside and the classes are overflowing on the inside, but they can't use the modular units because deep eye hasn't granted the permit. So what 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 can we do as board members, you know? I I'm open to even inviting them to a meeting, colleagues, if you guys are open to that, but I I just want to understand how can we support us moving our projects along and not getting held up?
So let's, our partners at Deep Eye have a charge. And that charge is to make sure that the buildings that we build and the buildings that they certify for occupancy are as safe as possible. And in doing that, I don't want to vilify them because the fact of the matter is they're doing the very best they can to give our students the safest, our students and teachers, the safest environments to be in. That also, part of the problem that we have though is that we have a lot of mandates that came from the the county council and the state around. One of our biggest issues that we have though is stormwater management. Uh, occasionally when I meet with, when I'm talking or I have a meeting and it's informal, I'll show them uh the stormwater management system that we put underneath um uh New Glen Ridge Elementary, a New Glen Ridge uh Middle School. Um, it looks like a an abbey underneath there, like a like a church. It's, I mean, they're seven foot, um, seven.
Comprehensive.
Yeah, very comprehensive. And a lot of our our projects, they're asking us to store, to deal with stormwater management for the entire uh neighborhood or area um to to alleviate a lot of issues that are not necessarily related to our projects. So if you look at Colin Powell, Colin Powell, I think is holding about somewhere like some millions of gallons of water are gonna be stored underneath that school in order to alleviate over the 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 flooding in that neighborhood. We've done extensive um stormwater management down there. And then sometimes they're asking us to wide roads and things like that. It's not the school issue that is always the problem or the building of the school. It's a lot of the stormwater management. And if we could advocate for some leniency in the stormwater management area and possibly some leniency on some of uh uh maybe some uh ability to grandfather in some issues related to some of our historical buildings, that would be helpful. How that occurs, I don't know. But let me say this also, Deep Eye works very closely with us. We have several meetings a month where we go over issues related to school occupancy and safety conditions. They work very, they they try to accommodate us as much as possible. I know this, and especially in the P three area, all the all of the uh agencies sat down once a week and met together to help expedite the permitting process as it related to the P three schools. Um, so there's a lot that they do to make what we do better, easier. There are some areas that are difficult for us because of the nature of the requirements in the in the county that are are different than some other places.
And and colleagues, this this may be a a focus for us that maybe we can look into how we can support um this office with, you know, some of these requirements that and just kind of getting to the root cause of why these requirements exist. I I I am in a learning mode because I'd like to learn more about why we have had these very stringent and specific requirements that, you know, ultimately are delaying us from doing what what we need to do in terms of modernizing the schools. And then just, you know, lastly, and I'll say this and then turn it over to um our chair, uh Board McKins Murray, to ask some additional questions on the second round. Um, I've mentioned to folks here that, you know, one of my goals this year is to really help us make uh the work of the ABFA committee and uh much more accessible uh by helping people to understand the different processes and budget processes that are happening here and when they can plug in as community members. And so I'd love as a follow-up to work with your office and um Ms. Guerrero to take a slide like slide um thirty here, um to take our general uh CEO's budget process um and to make sort of like a community-friendly budget where, I mean, process document where people can use a QR code to to log in to kind of see, you know, where do I sign up to speak, where does my school fit in this, and just helping people to um understand what we're doing here a bit more. Um, so that's that's all I had to say here, and uh I'll pass it over to board member, um to Chair McKins Murray.
Yep, and board board chair before, uh committee chair, before you move on, I I love that idea around increasing accessibility as well as uh board member Harris, uh looking at this slide that's still being displayed around the next steps process. What I would suggest is that we also loop in our new chief of communications, uh because we know that she is tasked with um making all of our processes and operations more accessible for families uh and allowing them to have inputs. So I just want to offer that as well.
That'd be awesome. Thank you so much, Dr. Coleman. Chair McKins Murray?
Okay, um Chair Adams Stafford, what was the name of the group that we were talking about with the uh stormwater management?
Deep Eye.
DPAC. Okay.
D P I E, D P I E, Deep Eye.
DPAC. Okay, what I'm suggesting is that we need to start a group, we need to start a conversation with them. Uh, especially since you guys have asked us to be advocates for you. We need to understand what the issue is. We need someone from their organization to be at that table, and we need to work through it. So we need to, we need to start that a conversation and uh board member, uh I mean Chair Adam Stafford. I'm hoping that we can do it under uh this committee if possible. And it it may require like a little subcommittee under the committee uh because it will take more than this meeting, I think.
Absolutely.
Start ironing that out. So I just wanted to put that on the table.
Yeah.
To me, being this year.
To give you an example of what I mean by this, uh I live in Frederick County. There's a school that was just recently built uh around the corner. I I was offered a tour of it, which I took. And um they had one stormwater management pond, one. The school holds a thousand student, elementary students. We have, if you go out to Cherokee Lining, which we built, it holds less students than that, roughly just just under nine hundred students. We have eighteen stormwater retention ponds around that building. One versus eighteen. Okay, and that's not talking about the the stormwater management underneath the building. That's just what you can see. And so they had, they have less stringent requirements in Frederick County for stormwater management. And then they do them than Prince George's County. They're both both regulatory agencies, and one for Frederick, then one for for Prince George's County are following their policies. There's just a a much lower standard required. And you'll see that around the state that we have very extensive stormwater management requirements. And that makes the the cost of the building expensive, and it's expensive in places that nobody gets to see. And that's that's my point.
Okay, well, I don't think we can solve it tonight, but I do believe that we can start a conversation. And I think we can identify the other uh components within the county who can help us with this conversation.
Yeah, that that would be fantastic. Thank you so much uh to our student member of the board, Ms. Rivera Forbes.
Yes, so something I just wanted to add in is when making it accessible, because I believe that's extremely important again. Also, keeping in mind of making it accessible for students as well, because we are actively, you know, experiencing going into our schools every single day. I'm a student who's constantly sitting in the classroom. I know exactly what it's like to be in the school building. So I think it's extremely important to keep us in mind and making that accessible and even keeping in mind that we can provide testimonies as well, especially real in-time, accurate testimonies to knowing what's going on. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I love that. And um uh Ms. Guerrero, if we can um include uh Ms. Rivera Forbes in the discussion, that would be great to help us think about ways to make this accessible for students as well. Thanks so much. in the discussion, that would be great to help us think about ways to make this accessible for students as well. Thanks so much. Right. Okay. Um, I think we're moving on now to, if there are no other questions here, we're moving on to the comprehensive maintenance.
Mr. Washington. What a great job they're doing with the P three.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, well, good evening, brother. Uh, it's a pleasure to see everyone. Uh, hopefully, uh, it's been a restful uh summer. Uh, we haven't been resting. We've been focused on getting these schools delivered. And I can say, as of today, we have five brand-new schools that will open on time uh on August twenty eighth. Uh, there's a lot of uh scurrying and work to be done uh for sure. Uh, but uh it was at uh Kenmore today, and uh there were uh teachers unpacking and and very excited about this new year. And so um I have a presentation uh to to go over. Uh, we've had um to date, and I um I know Hyattville Middle School, I know Sonia Sotomayor have had um public um open houses. We've requested that they do open it up to the public to look at the school, to tour it. Uh, there was a a line out the door at Sotomayor uh that I think uh was around ten fifteen minutes long. Uh, and Hyattville, I think uh they ended up at around six hundred folks that came by. And so uh the excitement is there uh for these schools, and we're looking forward uh to to uh delivering even more as we go forward. And so with that, we'll uh talk through uh where we are with phase one and providing everybody an update on phase two.
Would you like me to share the screen?
Yes, yes, please. Um, and we can advance uh this slide. So uh just to give everybody a sense of where we are right now, uh we are closing out uh phase one. Uh, the final school uh to be delivered uh is uh Colin Powell Kade Academy. It will be delivered on November eighth. School will begin on November twenty seventh. Uh, so currently, uh Sean mentioned before. Um, we have two schools that will merge into Colin Powell, uh Potomac Landing at uh Colin Powell. Uh, well, Colin Powell um Academy at Potomac Landing Elementary School and Colin Powell Academy at Isaac Gordon Middle School. Um, and so both of those schools will move uh in November and begin classes the Monday after Thanksgiving. Um, we uh are excited about uh welcoming that final school in. Uh, the final piece of phase one to be completed uh is the demolition uh and the completion of the baseball field and the multipurpose field at Walker Mill. Uh, that is ongoing now, and that is scheduled to be delivered by uh mid-January. Uh, and at which point, um phase one uh will be complete and everything will have moved over uh to the maintenance program uh portion. Phase two uh which uh is underway. Uh, we're will uh require eight schools this time, will be two um K eight academies, uh six elementary schools. Uh, we are uh in the final stages of selection of the phase two developer. Uh, which uh you all will will know um here within the next month uh as we come to to the board for approval of that selected developer. Um, next slide. Um, so just a quick recap on phase one. Uh, as I mentioned before, uh really the big headline pieces here is that we set a thirty percent MBE utilization requirement. It was met uh over thirty-two percent uh of procured dollars. Uh, the difference from uh for us in this case was the fact it was dollars spent and procure, not participation. So this was thirty-two percent of the eligible dollars, which um ended being over I want to say a hundred and uh thirty-three million dollars uh for the program. Uh, secondly, uh we had the uh significant union participation, which we expect will increase in phase two. Uh, two of the largest contracts uh were uh union-based um uh entities. Uh, we are currently um have a master punch list um a process that's going uh going on and will continue uh to ensure that uh when the buildings are formally handed over and finally handed over, it's in the condition of which we contracted. Uh, and that work will continue when school begins, it will continue after hours and on the weekends. Um, and so uh that is work uh that will continue to happen. And the final big piece of the schools are murals uh that will start being uh placed in the schools uh over the next uh month. Hopefully, we are able to get them all done before the ribbon cuttings. Uh, but uh they've all been commissioned uh and uh they will be installed uh in the schools uh in the coming weeks. Um, next slide. Uh, next one, yes. So right now, uh this is where we are with phase two. Um, to give everyone a a little bit of background, uh phase two is our joint uh P three, uh public-private partnership with the state. The state has committed eight hundred and ten million dollars to Prince George's County Public Schools to administer a phase two um public-private partnership. As part of that um uh matching uh commitment, they've also added two additional schools. Um, they added those this spring. Uh, the board approved their inclusion in phase two. And so we had to modify the schedule a little bit, but we're right on track. Um, the the state's uh commitment is tied specifically to us completing and getting to a contract by June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the statutory language right now says if we do not have an agreement, uh the state contribution goes away, and we won't be able to do phase two. So um our team is solely focused on meeting that deadline uh and also uh ensuring uh that we have um um maximum participation from all um uh interested bo- parties. Uh, it's gonna be um a a fun process to get done. Uh, but uh that's really uh what is really triggering this real quick timeline, to be honest. So we are looking at designing eight schools, submitting plans, getting everybody uh in agreement at nine months. Uh, so uh that is uh the task before us. Um, and and uh uh Dr. Coleman smiles a lot, but I'm sure, you know, he he's gonna make it very clear that uh that that's our date. Uh, and that's that's not going to change. And so uh the biggest uh gateway um for that, uh I have here, like I said, we will be providing uh a board action summary to the board uh for their approval of the selected developer uh for approval on September twenty first board meeting. Uh, at which point, we will go into the exclusive negotiating agreement period that Sean referenced before, where they are going to be required to advance designs as well as commit to an affordability number that meets our uh requirement of, right now, it's sixty-two million dollars. Uh, and that's uh per year from an availability payment standpoint. Um, we are currently negotiating uh the MOU with the um um County Council. Uh, the IAC and Maryland Stadium Authority per the statute as well. Um, we expect hopefully to have that uh complete by October and to the board uh for your approval um uh in October uh or early November. Um, and then the rest of the dates uh set out here, uh the big, like I said before, the timing of this, the statute requires the contract to be approved by the IAC. And so we have uh provided every iteration of the contract to date to the IAC. We are providing as much um information as possible to ensure that that is not a complication for us to get this done on time. And the state has has committed that they are going to work with us. They've been a great partner thus far. Um, and that's where we are as it relates to the structuring uh behind the scenes, I would say, of the infrastructure of phase two and putting that together. Um, next slide. Um, and so this is uh really uh where the rubber hits the road. We are anticipating a financial close uh in June of twenty twenty-four, at which point we are back at uh groundbreakings and we're moving out. Uh, this will be a three-phase delivery. Um, so um Board Member Adam Stafford, this is our guarantee of the delivery of these schools. And so that is what the developer will be signing up for. Um, and uh we are really uh focused on um and Board Member Harris around the swing spaces and availability. That's why we've tiered it. Because of the uh the the lack of of an expansive array of swing space across the county, uh being very deliberate of how we set this up. Um, while also making sure that we have enough capacity uh to deliver the schools on time. And so uh that is the breakdown. Templeton uh and Margaret Brent uh will be delivered uh first. Uh, twenty twenty-seven, there will be four more schools, uh New Fairwood Area Elementary, New Brandywine, New Robert Frost, uh uh James Duckworth uh and uh Spring Hill Lake and Hyattville Elementary in uh July twenty twenty-eight. Next slide. Um, so a few things around the transaction structure uh that I I want to highlight and more than happy to address questions on these uh are really the scope of services that the developer will be signing up for. This is exactly what phase one uh included, uh but we refined it, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, but they are responsible for meeting our standards. They are responsible for a design-built uh approach and design that we sign off on. Um, so this is not them delivering what they want, and we have to accept it. Uh, they have to meet our technical requirements. Um, they are required to finance this deal and to make it affordable. Um, they are responsible for a thirty-year life cycle maintenance um plan. Um, and that goes into the development of their um facilities and the systems that go into these facilities. And then finally, they are required at the end of this contract to actually hand back and adhere to specific handback requirements. As it relates to the MOU that we're negotiating with the state, that's what they care about the most, D and E. What is our total cost of ownership and how can we protect our investment? And how can we ensure that uh we receive the schools back in a condition uh that is uh uh that that is worthy uh of of the investment that we made. And so in our MOU discussions, that's where they are focusing in terms of additional joint technical reviews, in terms of of adherence to uh standards uh that the state will come in and and evaluate. And so so that's where really the MOU is playing a role in laying out specific uh criteria uh and focus areas for each of the parties. Uh, PGCPS will continue to maintain custodial and uh daily facilities management uh um services at the schools. Uh, and we will continue to handle swing space and um um pupil enrollment and uh occupancy planning uh going forward. Uh, next slide. Um, as I mentioned before, uh this is the the compensation level. So the affordability limit is set forth based upon the available contribution of each of the parties. So uh the state is providing twenty-seven million dollars per year. Uh, Prince George's County uh Public Schools uh is uh providing somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five million, depending on uh where we end up, uh and the county is providing ten. And so we, we are responsible out of the operating budget to cover what we end up with. Uh, taking out the county, the the counties and the state's contribution. And so that's why you will hear me say it, Dr. Coleman say it, uh Superintendent House, everybody connected. Our catchword is affordability, period, end of stop. We know our number, and that is uh the number that the developer has to hit. Um, and we are going to work with them as much as possible. Uh, but uh we are um it, we we know it's gonna be a tough road to have to go back to the state, to have to go back to the county uh to request additional funds. Uh, we we are not above doing it. We will do it definitely, but we understand that it's our responsibility to do all we can to keep it under affordability and to to demonstrate uh discipline around that approach. Um, that, like I said before, the term will be thirty years. Um, and we, and to be clear, because this was not clear before. At no point are we providing a lease. At no point are we providing a right of entry. All of this is at their risk. We do not give up control, ownership of all, any of our buildings, of any of the land. We're providing them the opportunity to build on the land. So part of that affordability limit as well is risk that we uh we will pay them back. And so that is part of uh of of what we'll be working through with the developer um over the next year. So, um, next slide. A couple of things that I do want to point out that will be different uh for phase two than phase one. Uh, these three components specifically will be different. Uh, number one, we have carved out before we showed you an MBE um um compliance requirement uh that they met. In phase two, there will also be a CBB requirement that they will have to meet, a county-based uh business requirement. We feel that it's important that we do all we can to incentivize the developer to include qualified and capable county-based businesses as much as possible throughout this program. And so there will be a requirement, I believe it's fifteen percent, uh over a thirty-five percent. The state has a requirement. Our requirement is above the state's requirement. And so that is how we um have structured it. Uh, the developers have swallowed hard and know that they have to meet this goal. Um, the next is um MBE equity requirement. Each of the developers uh is required to have up to thirty percent of the required equity in the deal. Uh, uh financed and provided by an MBE equity firm. Uh, why? Because we believe that this is a platform to build capacity in the finance space. We have a lot focused on the construction. This opens the door for MBE firms to have books of business to go out across the country and to do more of this work. Um, and to book a bill, to book, to book a deal, you need twenty percent investment. And so that is uh why we structured it that way. Um, the final piece is one that that Sean and I are very excited about, and this will be the first time it's ever been done. Is we are carving out ten percent of the required equity based on the cost capital right now. That's somewhere between five to six million dollars for Prince George's County residents and businesses to invest in this program. They will, they will have a direct return, just like the owners, just like the businesses will, in the project. So we are excited about this opportunity because we believe, I strongly believe, that this is one way of building community wealth. Investing in projects that you are paying for, basically, um and providing that opportunity. Uh, we um expect the developers um to put together a plan uh through reg- regulation CF um through um the um um through securities law, uh the ability to raise these funds exists. Uh, we are going to set up a structure that uh will not penalize folks for investing, i.e. one that takes care of reporting, that takes care of 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 any taxable issues, et cetera. So that it literally is an opportunity and a vehicle for uh county residents to invest. It is a security. There is risk. And so we're going to go through um and that that process literally will probably take eighteen months or so for us to really get it right. And I suspect all of you will be requesting us multiple times to come out to speak to folks because there's a lot of marketing, there's a lot of information that needs to be provided. Um, and we recognize that we expect it and we understand it, and that is our focus um as as we put this together. Um, but that is, we've been able to do all of these things and to require all of these things because we were successful in phase one. Let me be very clear. We were successful in phase one. And we, we've been able to use that as a vehicle to push for things that we believe are important for Prince George's County. Um, next slide. And I will open it up for questions. Um, but uh but but before I do, I do want to say we thank you all so very much for uh for the feedback, the support, for uh the the critiques for everything over the past three years. It's been incredibly helpful and informative to us. Uh, we hope that, you know, as you see us move forward, um and closing out phase one and moving into phase two, that you see that we heard you and that we we recognize that um there are places for us to grow and things to learn. But we are incredibly excited that we were able to to get this done. But we are incredibly excited that we were able to to get this done. Uh, it's not perfect for sure, but um it's uh incredible being able to deliver six schools in three years that would normally take us sixteen years to deliver. And uh, that that, you know, seeing the students on Monday uh will be validation to us that um uh that this this was a a a good quest and uh one that we look forward to repeating again.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much for that presentation. I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for questions. Uh, Chair Mickens Murray.
Thank you, um Chair Adam Stafford. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I've been to two of those schools. I went to Heidsville Middle and I went to Walker Mill. You guys are to be commended. The quality of life that you are providing for our students in these six schools is phenomenal. And I took the best critic in the world, who is my husband. My husband was so excited about those schools. I think he wanted to come see if y'all give him a job or or maybe go back to elementary and middle school. But you guys are to be commended and every opportunity that I have, uh if uh Superintendent House agrees for you to speak, I will definitely let you know because you should share this information. I'm extremely proud and and I just thank you and the quality of the space and the multipurpose of that space. I mean, you guys thought of everything and things that I didn't think of, you thought of. So I am so pleased, I am so pleased that our youngsters will start uh on the twenty eighth with a brand new experience and I bet you they'll go to school on time every day. We gonna see. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, go ahead, uh Dr. Harris.
It is one, well, first off again, I want to echo uh Chair Mickens Murray here. You all are definitely to be commended on your work. Um, I had a chance to view the schools as well. Uh, absolutely amazing work you all are doing and and the 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 great part is this is just the beginning, right? So we're off to phase two and we can, wanna continue that great work. So thank you um for, you know, um fielding our questions, Will. Thank you for answering those questions. Thank you for again being partners throughout this entire thing. Um, a question I want to tee up for the sake of our new members um to the committee and the board. Um, can you go back to slide eight for me? When dealing with the approval process that'll come from the September twenty first meeting, um, can you talk to me a little about what what that approval will look like, Mr. Washington, in terms of, are we taking a look at the sour, um, like, well, I guess you all call it a S O S, a a s- a scope of services? Are we looking at the scope of services? Um, what what is that approval? What are we approving outside just this is the vendor or this is the builder or constructor that we're gonna use?
So what we're going to provide uh to you all is is how we've set this up uh has been, we have locked the developers into ninety five percent of the project agreement right now. So we we won't be going in wanting to negotiate other things and and leverage this and that and the other, no. They have agreed to a form of contract. They've agreed to a form of of a exclusive negoti- negotiating agreement. Uh, they have also agreed to fixed cost. So as part of their final proposal, they sent us fixed cost right now that cannot change. And we, they did it under competitive pressure. So I'm sure that they probably took haircuts that they didn't wanna take. And so what um you all will be approving will be allowing us to proceed into the exclusive negotiating agreement to finalize uh an agreement. Um, it would be approving the form of of uh of contract, of project agreement. Uh, we will point out that the only thing that will change in the project agreement is very similar to phase one. That's why we we he, we were uh, oh, I don't wanna say draconian, but we were pretty much, you know, we know that this is a bankable deal. And you know what we are kind of looking for. And so uh what we are uh looking for from from uh and that you all will see is when you uh put all that together, it is, the only open issues will be financial. What is our final uh payment amount? What is the final interest rate? All of those things, but the other components of this deal, I would have to say are probably more stringent than phase one. Um, we put in and we had some some lessons around uh doing a better job, and this is our lesson, doing a better job of site selection and doing a lot more work upfront. So we don't have, while we couldn't prevent it, we don't have a Colin Powell type situation across the full program because of certain issues, because what you pointed out before, sir, would definitely happen if there was swing space involved. And and that that is, you know, uh, but overall, that would be what the approval will be for. Um, and based upon that approval, we can then pivot with the I A C and say, this is the document. So you don't have to wonder what the document will be that you need to approve. You already have it. And um, and so that that is the, that's the way that it's it's set up. That's um uh what the approval will be looking for. Um, and but at any point, you all will have the the opportunity to call us back. Um, while the E N A is confidential, you will have all of the documents that will dictate what that, what that process will look like, so.
Okay, thank you for that, and I'm sure you'll hear me say it again, but I want to make sure that, or it's it's one of my goals that this committee and the board in general is doing their part to make sure that we are hitting that that um that date that we've been talking about so often. Um, cause at this point, as we can see, this is very uh schedule driven, because we don't wanna miss out on any incentives as a result of missing um having a contract on the books. Um, so I think it's important to understand what we're, what we're proving, what we'll be looking for, and what work has already been done for us, so that ninety five percent is really important. Um, okay, thank you for your, thank you for your comment. Uh, back to you, Chair, uh Adam Stafford.
Thank you so much, and I just also wanna echo my colleagues in saying, this is just nothing short of amazing what you all have been able to do in the last three years. Um, as I said, when I went to Kenmore uh with Mr. Washington, I was just so amazed and ready to just go back to the classroom, honestly. Because it just is a great and inviting space for educators to really do what they do best, and that's teach children. Um, one of the things that really struck me about the new schools uh really was the very intentional design for instruction, where there are like very specific spaces in these new schools that are going to foster like student collaboration, like in the hallways, that they can have like these really engaging learning experiences. And so one of my questions was just, you know, have we been doing some cross discussion with like academics to just talk about like how to use the space effectively? Because there's just so much there for them to use.
You you have uh hit on what we've been looking at is from one of the 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 big things that um from just feedback we've been receiving from the academic team. Uh, one of the big goals is making sure that we just don't deliver uh a package and say, make it work. How can we ensure that the buildings and the facilities that we are delivering are um complementing the academic side? So for instance, um, we got a crash course on uh on on scheduling and 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 really the module schedules and and how that fits and how, you know, we were thinking one way and the academic folks were like, no, four classes are every day. And so thinking about now, as we look at designing additional schools, how that, how a pod type structure or how how there are different ways that we can structure a school to allow for flexibility to where enrollment doesn't matter because you have it segregated and put in such a way to where you're able to absorb and it's not tied to just the four walls. And so so that's been a, that's been a big lesson that we've had and, but also the fact is, is now the co, you know, the collaboration across um disciplines. So science, looking at the steam room, and you have your 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 media arts looking at the production studios and 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 having that opportunity to do it in one school um has been, has been quite um uh enriching and and enlightening. And and then finally, I would just say, I think just the the word that keeps coming back to me for these schools is aspirational. This, the 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 schools provide students with a a blueprint of what they can be. And and anything you wanna try, you can try it in these schools. And from the fact that, you know, the cafeterias look better than most high school cafeterias. I'm just gonna be like, like the 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 salt seating and the way it's set up is not set up to treat you like, you know, like 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 a seventh grader. It's to treat you like where we expect you to be and and what where we know you can be. Um, and and so I I think that's what, you know, we're going to be really drawing upon. Uh, we are gonna be reaching out to the academic team to inform us as we move towards phase two. Um, and and those design discussions now, um with that in mind, and so.
Yes, I I would say, I agree with everything you said. I mean, even down to the bathrooms, folks. If you haven't been and seen the bathrooms, the bathrooms are really designed to support students in that gradual release of becoming a young adult in terms of just how they're wanting them to engage with going to the bathroom on their own and and being able to navigate uh the school. And so you, there has to be, in my mind, just from like an academic and a school leader standpoint, some like on the ground, just in person, kind of tr- training for this new atmosphere. I mean, is there going to be some like protocol discussion on how to use those bathrooms? Or, you know, how to engage with some of the multipurpose spaces? You know, I'm even seeing like possibly some type of, you know, walkthrough or training of schools that are using interdisciplinary um measures to teach, like using those steam classrooms? Cause we do have some schools that are doing that right now. Perhaps some of the folks in these schools, if they're not already using some of those strategies, can go and view it in person to to get some ideas on how they can really fully utilize the space.
Yeah, no, I mean, that that is, that that's the idea, is is that it is um from a training perspective, one of the unique things is that all of the equipment, everything in that building, we have videos on how to use it. We have videos on how to 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 utilize it to its maximum potential. We have, and that can be accessed from anyone in the school system. And so what does that look like? That looks like when 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 C I P is doing an update in a school. And there's the ability to uh create a steam lab in a school that doesn't have one. They can reach out and look at the videos of what's being done in these blueprint schools and what's there and incorporate that into those spaces. So it's, so we don't want this to be some segregated call out of just these six schools. The whole idea of this is that it starts to permeate how we um look at, one, facilities, but then, two, um really uh delivering um the 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 academic um uh program outside of just these six schools but across the district.
Yeah, I I definitely, you know, just in thinking about training and and using like a new physical space, it's great that you will have those videos that will help people kind of start to envision how to really, you know, fully utilize what what is available to them. So I, ooh, I kinda closed my screen there. I'd love to know more about that cross collaboration you mentioned with the academic department as well. Um, I I also wanted to just say I'm really excited about the community investment component. Um, I think that that's really gonna be a way for everyone in our community to be involved in public education in a real meaningful way. So I'm hoping that we can have some further discussions on how you envision that rolling out um and ways that the board can support that as well. Um, and just, you know, my last question was on, you know, I know that you talked about the meeting the goals for our M B Bs um and adding in the the local county component as well, the CDBs, and you know, I think that's wonderful. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about just some of the commitments that the developer will be making around, like hiring local workers. You know, we had so many of our, you know, our our parents in our our family here. They they were workers and many of them are workers in a lot of the industries um that are needed to build these schools. And and one of the biggest challenges we face when we go out to schools and communities, people are saying we need employment. You know, we need an opportunity to to use our skills and in our our gifts to um, you know, really make a an honest living um and at a fair wage. And so I just wanted to know kind of what we were doing along those lines uh with this second phase.
Yeah, uh, g- great, uh, great question and and need to probably add add it to the slides. Uh, one thing that we're adding that's in the contract now is that there's a forty percent local hiring requirement um as well. Um, uh, that was not um added before. Um, and we've had, um, I think we've now met three times uh with the building trades uh around crafting um uh potential uh a project labor agreement that um allows for more participation uh for for local businesses and local workforce. Uh, there's still more to do, but we have committed and we do believe that there is a path forward uh to getting that done. Uh, and so we uh will be um working with uh building trades as well as the selected developer uh to sit down and 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 figure that out. Um, it's, it it's too important not to um be able to find a a solution. And so we we feel um confident that one can be um can be found uh while keeping us in affordability. Um, and we're excited about uh um seeing that through, uh but that's top of mind to us as well. Um, it makes no sense for us to have all of this opportunity and all of the jobs coming from folks outside of the county. Um, and so so those are things that uh we have added. Um, that the forty percent um uh goal in the in the project agreement is there now, and so it was not there in phase one. Uh, but we we definitely are excited about um our initial conversations with with building trades. Uh, I I thank uh Board Chair for bringing us all together uh uh earlier this summer uh for that initial meeting. Uh, and we followed up with 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 a few um uh meetings after that. And so we expect uh that to um uh to uh to to bear fruit here um in the coming months.
Thank you so much, and I I just wanna say, just this entire department has been just so receptive and just just so in tune with what the community is asking for. And I'm just very, very grateful to you all for all that you've done to really listen and engage the community, so thank you again. Okay, were there any additional questions here? I know we're pushing at um six thirty now. All right. Okay, um, well, I'd just like to, um, thank you, um, oh, sorry. Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Coleman, Mr. Matlock, and Mr. Washington for your presentations tonight. I know I learned so much and I know we have a few follow-ups here as well, and we're all looking forward to the new schools opening next week. Thank you again. Um, so moving on to item four point one, one, there are no follow-ups um for the posting from the June fourteenth, twenty twenty three meeting. Um, so the next steps, I'd like to take this opportunity to discuss the process for the development of the committee's work plan for this year. Um, so I've spoken with this committee about really my goal for this year of really having board members be more involved in our discussion and and really having conversations that mirror some of the conversations we're having out in the community. And so one of the mechanisms we'll be using will be a survey for board members uh to really pose some systemic questions um that they'll bring to our committee, um and we will have discussions on them. Uh, in, as opposed to uh just like very specific presentations, these may be discussions that um cover a broad range of topics but have um to do with operations and budget budget and fiscal affairs. So for example, you know, board members may ask questions around like um our spending on uh transportation or some of the transportation challenges that we face across several districts and looking at it uh from a systemic lens. Um, board members may ask questions about our spending on special education and sort of looking at that over the course of several years, just getting a better understanding of sort of, you know, how things change, how they fluctuate, and what are some of the factors there. We may have a special meeting around um the stormwater drainage and the support from Deep High and how that can often be a challenge when we're trying to build new schools. And so that survey is going out and I'm asking for board members to return their results from that survey by September fifteenth um so that we can then work with the O B A F A committee to set out um a schedule of topics for the year and that the administration will have ample time to prepare and we can um have a discussion. Another thing that we will be doing, and I'm not sure, uh Jessica, if we can share screen, is we will be sharing out to the community our uh budget priority survey. And so we will be distributing this to all board members to share out with their communities to get some feedback from community members on what our budget priorities should be for this upcoming year. Uh, we will then present those to the administration in October. And so that will be coming up soon and I'll just kind of give you a preview. It will have a Q R code. We really wanna have a goal of getting as many people as possible to fill out this survey, including many, many students. Just see here. people as possible to fill out this survey, including many, many students. Just see here. Give me one second. Oh, you have it? Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay. All right, so you all will be seeing this go out. Um, and we really wanna get a lot of feedback um so that we can ensure that the voices of the community members are heard as we're you know, in in the budget process with the the superintendent. Um, and then, you know, from this meeting, I'm hoping as one of our follow-ups, we'll have an opportunity to uh sit down with Mr. Matlock and his team to really think about um the accessibility of the C I P. Um, but then also uh this team will be thinking um with Ms. Howell, how we can make the um C E O's budget priorities, uh the C E O's budget more accessible as well to the community. Um, because I think that community members have a desire to engage, but maybe they may not be as well versed in sort of how the process unfolds throughout the year. So, thank you so much. All right. The next um budget, operations, budget and fiscal affairs committee meeting will be held on next, will be held on Wednesday, September thirteenth at five P M. I'd like to first just thank everyone for a great meeting and I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second into adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you so much and good night.